Tuesday, January 11th, 2016. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam.
Free cam, I'm not.
You're not? Okay. All right. Anybody here for a consent agenda? Anybody want to approach the board on anything? Okay, then I'm gonna move down. Take a couple of things out of order here. I want to take action relative to renewing a Class II motor vehicle license for DPF Enterprises, Inc.
Yeah, I got it. A motion made to renew?
I have a motion made and seconded to renew. I'll second that. So I have a motion made and seconded to renew the Class II motor license for DPF Enterprises. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
You're good.
You want to grab the rest of them while we're at it?
Okay. Next on the list would be... Next on the list would be approve Herb's Auto Body application, auto license renewal.
Motion to approve.
I second that. I have a motion made and seconded to approve the license for Herb's Auto Body. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Herb's has passed. Next on the agenda is Chipaway Auto Sales. A... Have a motion made?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, and I second that motion. I have a motion made and seconded to approve Chipaway Auto Sales application for license renewals. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And last, I have one for Beach Bluff Auto Sales. Have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
And I second that motion. I have a motion made and seconded to approve the license application for Bee- Bluff... Beach Bluff Auto Sales. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done. Okay, we're going back up to how we're gonna take action tonight relative to... To approve and sign agreements for the South Main Street Bridge and Locust Street Bridge. To discuss slash approve or sign South Main Street Speed Zone Study. We're gonna hear the town administrators' report. Approve or renew IRB three for mileage. Approve and sign an amendment, IMA, with NRG. Don't you love these acronyms? Nobody knows what they mean but us. And even I question that. And we're gonna approve abatements for December 2015 as submitted by the fire chief. And the annual renewal of class license, Class II three motor licenses, which we just did. Going to the top of the... Action agenda. Mr. McComber, would you like to come up and discuss these with us, please?
Sure.
We have... I have seventy-seven pages of information on my iPad. And sixty... Sixty-three or sixty-four pages for this Main Street Bridge thing. So if you could walk us through it, I appreciate it, sir.
Basically, South Main Street and Locust Street. That's just an agreement with GPI to do the engineering on both projects. The gist of the South Main Street project is to fix erosion from the water line down. Well, that has nothing to do with touching the top of the bridge or realignment or anything. It's basically to fix the problems of the bridge current. So that's one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. A lot of that's gonna be a hydrology study, just 'cause that is the title. And there's a bit to it.
Yep.
That's one thirty... Hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred for the South Main Street and the Locust Street. It's pretty much a maintenance issue. That's fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. That is to... For the bulk of it's gonna be sandblast and paint the steel I beams. That's seventy-five percent of the project. As we see how far the money will go, that currently has concrete, like guide rail. We're thinking that we might be able to replace that concrete guide rail with current modern day steel gal- galvanized guide rail. So a lot will depend on... We will do as much as we can with...
The funds that are available.
With the funds that are available.
Is this Chapter 90 money, some of it?
No.
No?
No, this is a hundred percent the money that we voted on in special town meeting in the fall. So, yeah, I think it's seven...
Seven fifty or something?
Yes, it was something like that, was the total. So this will take care of the engineering. This will get us everything engineered and get the documents ready to go out. It'd be in the spring. Construction to happen this summer coming up. South Main Street will have no closures. Locust Street, to make the process as quickly as possible, we may close that bridge for anywhere from three days to two weeks. Detour wouldn't really affect that many people. Detour's a pretty quick detour. So that's the bulk of that project. And I would suspect both projects will be done...
How long do you think it's gonna take for the hydraulic study? That's a pretty...
It won't take... 'Cause they've got... They've already got a pretty good head start on that with the state and their bridge inspections. This pretty much started the erosion path from the floods of 2010. So, yeah, they spent a lot of time down there. Mass highway engineers, so they've got a library that they can pull from. So that should speed this whole process up.
This should put us in pretty good shape, bridge-wise.
We are done with bridges. We've done every bridge in town after these two are done.
I'd like to make comment. That bridge, Ridgeline Bridge that they did, fabulous. That thing is fab... People called me and said, "I know where the money's going."
Yeah, turned out well.
It did, nice.
No, we're... For a project that size, we haven't got the final bills yet, but we're looking at probably less than a two percent overrun.
Yeah.
And right now, we're holding back a certain percentage of money till probably the spring. That project will be paid off in the spring, 'cause we're gonna make them come back and touch up the landscaping and, you know, whatever small things they'll touch up. But, yeah, the project turned out fabulous. Ed had did an awesome job on that bridge.
So we're looking at a hundred and eight... Hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in these agreements to...
Hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the South Main Street. Fifty-two thousand, one hundred for the Locust Street.
In both the agreements that we're signing with GPI?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion, Mr. Sayd. Should I have questions?
Well, I do have a question, but not on the bridge. We're gonna get to the other one after the speed study?
Okay.
All right, I make a motion that we sign the agreements with GPI for the engineering studies, both the South Main Street and the Locust Street Bridge projects.
I'll second that. So I have a motion made and seconded to sign the agreements with GPI for the South Main Street engineering study for the South Main Street Bridge and Locust Street Bridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next on our agenda is to discuss, approve, and sign the South Main Street Speed Zone Study. Tell us about that, sir.
Um, the section of South Main Street from... Basically between Stop &amp; Shop and Brighton Summer. The Brighton... That Stop &amp; Shop paid to widen, straighten, and make all nice and neat.
That's the one that was just finished?
Yes.
We paid for the asphalt by the time.
Yes. Fabulous job.
It's fabulous.
Came out from the very beginning to... Currently, it's great. The... One problem with that is we did straighten the road a little bit and we widened it a little bit, which means people are driving that much faster. Part of the problem in talking to the police chief is, "All right, we're gonna post a speed limit." I say, "Well, Carlton, you must have a record of what the speed limit was." Sure enough, he does. Came to me, "That last traffic study was done in nineteen seventy-four."
Seventy-four?
There's absolutely a huge difference between South Main... There's no part of South Main Street that resembles South Main Street...
In nineteen seventy-four.
In nineteen seventy-four. Traffic counts are quite grueling, easily. It's just a totally different animal. I said, "Carlton, we can't post speed limits on nineteen seventy-four." I mean, nineteen seventy-four South Main Street was... If you were lucky, it was eighteen feet wide, windy, narrow. It's totally different now. We need to do a study. The only way to legally post that route is to do the study. Or you just don't post it at all and let whatever happens, happens. I would... The big thing is the funding source. Where are we gonna come up with forty-nine hundred and sixty dollars?
Forty-nine hundred?
Four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Five thousand bucks?
Five thousand bucks to do the traffic study. That's...
That's a great question. You know?
Make a motion that we do the traffic study and take it out of Chuck's budget? No, no, that's not... I'm only harassing him a little bit.
That's something that's gonna be for the people.
No, do we... Do we have any money, Chuck?
I'd have to take a look to see where they're sourced. Do you know of any potential?
No. I'll knock... Ah, fuck my head. I don't know if that's something that Chapter 90 could pay for. I'm thinking maybe not, but, um...
What's the number again?
Four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Is it possible? Check with Chapter 90 and see if it can be used?
I gotta check on the balance. 'Cause we've got a lot of projects that we have yet to close out. It's pretty close.
Well, I mean, if we don't have a funding source, I mean, that means we have to go to a town meeting to get it.
Exactly.
So, I mean, the earliest we'll have this will be in June.
Again, this is... I'm just planting a seed.
What's in... Just so I know, what's involved in the traffic study these days?
Traffic count is primary. The average speed...
Wires on the roads?
Yes, the tires on the road. Put those down, and then they go out there with a radar gun. And they shoot radar so many hundred cars this direction, so many hundred cars that direction, and over a set amount of days, they do that.
Who's this? Who's that?
It's the GPI.
GPI does that too?
Yeah. That's... You need to have... You need to have an engineering... You just can't. 'Cause when it's all said and done, when the report's done, it needs to have a PE stamp. So it's legally...
PE?
Professional Engineering.
Okay.
So that's... That's... You need to... It's not legal. I mean, we could put up speed limit signs today. Twenty-five miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour. But if whoever gets pulled over, and there will be plenty of people that get pulled over, there's no validity to it.
Yeah, but what about the maximum speed in town would be forty? So anything over forty would be valid for the time being. I mean, we're not posting it.
Correct.
Maximum speed is forty.
Correct.
Right. So an officer can pull somebody over for anything over forty miles an hour and be a valid citation?
I know some of the residents in that stretch made issue with, you know, the cars flying, the trucks flying.
Well, I imagine, yeah.
We've contacted Stop &amp; Shop and said, "Hey, can you just put out a bulletin to your trucks and all the gypsies that come in to take it easy?"
What do you think a speed limit's gonna... Would end up being?
Um, honestly, probably forty-five through that one stretch.
Yeah?
Usually, when they do a study, you always hope for the lowest speed limit, but it always... It's always higher than...
Yeah.
And pretty much the traffic that travels that road dictates it. 'Cause I think if they do the readings on two hundred cars, I think they do an average. So if you got a guy going fifty, you got a guy going, you know, forty, it's forty-five. So...
I mean, forty's a reasonable speed. I mean, that's not a bad speed at all.
No, I would think so, but...
I would've thought you'd hear more about complaining about pack brakes and things like that than anything. Nothing yet?
No, not there. Everywhere else in town, but not... It's just one of those things.
No, you can't even go to what... The Finance Committee, right, for a transfer on that, because that's...
Hasn't been funded.
Right, it has been funded. It's not...
It isn't like we had three thousand and it ended up costing five. We don't have any... No budget for that.
Well, like I said, it's not... It's not an emergency. It's not super critical. I just figured I'd plant the seed.
Sure, appreciate it.
I think GPI, did they... Not GPI. Colton and Paige, look at that agreement also.
Yeah.
So the legal end of it, the contracts are there. Everything's all set. If we can come up with five grand somewhere...
Let's look... Let's look at our town administrator working on, see if he can find some change or something in the corner somewhere.
Our Chapter 90 money. If that fails, you go... We put an article for the annual town meeting...
Annual town meeting.
On the special town meeting before the annual.
It's not a huge item, like I said. I didn't think that it would happen today. Probably, honestly, it'd be easier for them to do a traffic study in the spring. 'Cause they don't wanna put out those... The counters, the wires.
'Cause then you're...
And then, "Oh crap, it's gonna snow tonight." Then they gotta run down, or we're gonna tear all that stuff out.
It's not gonna snow this year.
Is that a guarantee?
No, somebody keeps telling me that.
Last year at this time, we've had pretty much the same amount of snowfall as we've had this year.
I know. And then the doors opened.
And we had eight feet of snow in five weeks.
It's when you get cold next week.
So we'll work on the speed study. And I think that's a great recommendation.
Yeah, everything else is...
Can I ask you something on the agenda? Licenses for the troops at the Highway Department.
Everyone... Jeremy Donato took the test. He took two tests. Passed one, failed the other. He's in the process of reapplying for that test. Andy Simmons has applied. They all three guys applied at the same time. But unless you've dealt with the Department of Public Safety, they, uh, one messed up with the caps. He's still awaiting testing.
Okay.
The applications have been sent. Everything, he's been studying his brains off. We're just waiting for the official testing of the public safety.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you firsthand knowledge, I submitted my renewal for my license August 24th. Haven't got my renewed license yet. You call it every week, you get an automated system, and they say, they flat out tell you, "Your license, if you haven't received anything from us, your license is still in the renewal process." This goes from August 24th till today. I still don't have my renewed license yet.
So the process is...
When Jeremy went, took his test, like I said, three guys submitted their application at the exact same time. I think they go down the alphabet, and they pull so many Bs, so many Cs, so many Ds. In Taunton, the day he went, there was three hundred for the first test and two hundred and sixty-seven for the second test. So there's a lot of want. People wanting to get these licenses. And the Department of Public Safety is only... I don't know if they've had budget cuts, which Ali did, or what's going on, but it's... You don't... You can't talk to a person at that place of business. And it seems like... And it's not just us, it's Lakeville, Berkeley. They have people that are waiting to take tests.
You're good with the progress? It's the procedure that's...
It's the procedure. I mean, they've done everything that they can physically do. They've applied for the test, they've paid for the test. Everything is... We're just waiting for testing.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Oh, I thought I was gonna get you here now.
Since you're already on the hot seat, how many catch bases did we clean this year in town? Any?
Very few.
What's the count?
Couldn't tell you. We've only... We really... We're really in good shape for having basins that haven't been cleaned like they should be. We haven't had any issues. I think we've had two that we had issues with. We went out, I went out with the truck and cleaned them myself.
Okay.
And I figured if anybody's gonna eat a ten thousand dollar fine, it's gonna be me.
The only guy that can afford it. Right?
No, he knows it. He knows that the towel covered it for him.
That's right.
That... Unfortunately, that's the biggest problem with all this licensing thing. But now that they insist on you having continuing education, the guys went for that, and the inspector from the Department of Public Safety said, "You, Lee Baumgartner, if I catch you running that machine, it's a ten thousand dollar fine, and it's not to the company or the town, it's to you personally." So as employees... And it's not just Freetown. Every neighbor in town is going through the same thing. The Department of Public Safety is... Maybe they're looking for...
You forgot the rules and don't have the people to enforce them or train people to do that.
It's... But the problem is, there is an inspector that's floating on it. He's been to my place three times now, four times, getting copies of his licenses, doing to his... To be the strong arm of the law. That's where we're at.
So does the truck still start?
It's truck. Oh, the catch basin truck? Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, last time I... Last time I used it, it was probably a month and a half ago, and it was tired right up.
You gonna put a snowfall on it for the winter? No.
I'm not gonna be drinking.
How'd you make out with all those job applicants? I know we got a... Last time, I looked, we had like twelve, sixteen or something?
Yeah. Good, I'm pretty happy with...
The response.
With the response. And I, in my own head, like I told Ally, probably the next couple of days, I'd like to go down there and whittle through, just to save us the time. 'Cause I think there's at least five or six applicants that don't qualify at all.
Yeah.
They're just throwing their name in the hat in the rain, hoping for the best. Again, they would just move those to the side.
Yeah. See, I have some people with Freetown that have the right licenses for that.
Yes. So I'm... I strongly would recommend that we hire a town resident, just because I think, and don't take this wrong to anybody, I think we've got enough people that live outside of town...
Working here.
Working here. Then maybe we can give somebody from in-town a chance.
I agree with you.
Well, we usually give town residents, my estimation. I think that's very important.
I get that. I think we've got some qualified people that are from town that apply. I'd like to narrow it down to, you know, three or five...
Sure.
Instead of interviewing the whole gamut of...
Well, that's typically what we do.
Yeah. Narrow it down to three or five.
Look at their resumes and say, "Give me five."
Twenty. Interviewing twenty.
Twenty, right? On the twentieth? We're gonna get copies of those, so we can look at his culledown version? After, after, yeah, okay. Hey, can you, the twenty-seventh, put that on your radar for Brown Bag? Chuck, thank you. Hopefully, it won't snow that day. What are you doing on the twenty-seventh?
Hopefully, it doesn't snow between now and then.
What am I doing on the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
I don't remember what I did two days ago. Now, sir, the twenty-seventh, that's like a lifetime away, isn't it? I don't know, what's the twenty-seventh?
Brown Bag!
Oh. I'll let you know.
Need hands. Strong hands.
Yes, we're good, Chuck. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Have a good night.
Chuck, you're whittling away to nothing.
He is.
Chuck, I'll do that to you.
Have a good night.
You also.
See you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Onward and upward. I hate to breach this subject, Select and Sayd, but now we have to... We have to do the whole town administration reports, which I think is gonna be very lengthy.
No, I don't think so.
No?
I... Well, we're working on setting up the net meter and credit agreements with the Freetown, Lakeville Regional School District. Hope to have a discussion with them on Wednesday night, the thirteenth. They may not act on it that night. And I think their next meeting is the twenty-fifth, or the meeting on the twenty-seventh, or vice versa.
I think we're on the twenty-fifth.
Then they're on the twenty-seventh. And that's probably the point at which they consider signing the agreements.
Yeah.
These are the net meter and credit agreements and the intermunicipal agreement with the school district, which will allow all the utilities, all the electric utilities that the town pays for and all, its town accounts and the elementary school, to benefit from the purchase of solar credits from a project that the town entered into a contract with that's located, it used to be Borrego Project...
On Locust Street.
Uh, on Locust Street. And then Borrego came and asked us to reconsider or to renegotiate the contract. And they wanted to change the category, because there's four different categories of solar projects in their portfolio. So they wanted to move it from one category to another. So they proposed for us to allow them to do that with the Locust Street Project. And that became a community solar project, where anybody that wants to buy into it can buy into it rather than put it on their roof with it. And instead, we entered into... Well, we renegotiated an agreement with them. They, remember, they wanted to do this, so we wanted to get something for making the change.
Right.
We got an extra penny, and we got the kiosk in the school system. I've been crapping some of the emails back and forth on the kiosk project, and that's really getting exciting, because we found out when we met with the Borrego rep who installs these, that they've already done this in many locations, but most recently in Plymouth. In the Plymouth School System, they've made it available to every monitor in the system. So instead of simply being available for the elementary school, which is probably not the optimum place to teach solar credits and all of that esoteric stuff, we're now gonna be able to put it in on every monitor in the school system. And so the school superintendent's really getting excited about this.
They can actually see how much money that the solar field is generating.
And each grade... Each grade level, group of grade levels, can structure programs and software options around that grade level's ability to understand. And so it really opens the door to a whole bunch of different types of educational programs in the school system throughout, from kindergarten right through senior and high school. So it's getting very exciting. Anyway, we're still working on coming up with how we're gonna finance and pay for this in both the school department and the town side. We're getting close, but we've got a conference call with the school district and our consultants tomorrow morning at eleven-thirty. And we're gonna try and...
What are you looking at for numbers?
Well, I don't... Again, I don't know what the exact numbers are in terms of... We're working on those right now. But we're gonna come out on the plus side in terms of our current cost of power. We're not gonna be paying as much power cost, and our administrative costs are gonna be negligible. The school district, because the elementary school represents sixty-six percent of the total power use of all town entities, you know, fire, police, highway, town hall, streetlights, and so forth. streetlights, and so forth, uh, still the school department, just the elementary school, is sixty-six percent of the total. So the, uh, so any administrative costs are gonna be borne in their, in their swamp, are gonna be borne, um, in large measure by the school department. But just to give you an idea, the town's administrative costs are estimated at, um, uh, two thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. So if that's thirty-four percent of the total, you know, you can fairly easily figure that out, it's not gonna be more than six or seven thousand dollars for the school system.
Did I see eleven cents a kilowatt hour or something?
Yeah, right, it's gonna be very, uh, very attractive, and then, on top of that, the aggregation, um, you know, the, uh, we're gonna be benefiting in other ways from the aggregation.
Sure, that was nine point five cents.
Yeah.
For two years, so this is a good deal.
You know, wherever, I don't wanna get into the, the detail that I've been laying on you all week long.
Yeah, that's all right.
But, um, that's the story on the, uh, on the, uh, major portion of my reports.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, you mentioned, uh, being, uh, the kiosks, and then they changed it down to, uh, being able to put some type of program on the different, uh, monitor, you know, computer systems within the school.
Mm-hmm.
And you mentioned high school.
Yes. Yeah, because they can, they can structure this so that it goes on all of the monitors in the system, they can, um, they can not only use the, do the elementary school, but they can do every level in the school system.
This has nothing to do with the regional, right?
I was gonna say that, but the kiosks, right.
I just wanna make sure I got this right in my head.
Yeah, yeah.
All these costs are attributed to kind of Freetown and High Elementary School, even though the elementary school's part of the region.
That's correct.
We lease that to the region.
Yes.
For a dollar a year.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, um.
Well, I, I guess, uh, the other question I have, and it's probably 'cause I just don't understand this completely, is that the aggregate program that we have, we're paying with nine point five cents?
Yeah.
A kilowatt hour?
Generation.
Yeah.
For the generation costs.
Yeah.
The eleven cents an hour that you're talking under this program is for what?
These are credits on our bill.
Addition to the nine point eight, by nine point five?
Nine point five is gonna cover anything else, uh, everyone else in the community, all right?
Well, it's, it, it's a different program completely, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, but does the school get benefit of the nine point five also? And, and the town?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the eleven?
Well, I don't know how they're gonna interact, I'd have to find that out.
So we don't have that information at this point?
No, I don't, I don't.
And I guess the other question I have for you, and I, I'm sure tomorrow's meeting will probably explain this, but I, I don't understand why we, we're paying administrative costs.
Okay, well.
So I think that's something that you're gonna find out tomorrow?
I, I am, and we'll be detailed those, I sent you a couple of emails.
I looked at it, but I was confused after reading that.
Okay, trying to clear, clear up any confusion.
Okay.
Um, the next item in my report, uh, another piece of good news is that, uh, you may remember that we, uh, the board, at the board's instruction, I tried to get us qualified to participate in what they call the Greater Attleboro-Totting Home Consortium.
Have you talked about that in some?
And, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development has approved, the town is eligible under the program, and I sent you a notice of that approval.
So you were invited to join it?
Yes, and, uh, well, not invited, we've become a member.
Yeah.
So, as I recall, um, when we first took this up, it was Bob Alderson, uh, a friend of Bob's, was interested in the, in the town seeking eligibility. I don't know exactly what the circumstances were, but that's what sparked, what sparked this directive for me to get out there. So I submitted the information necessary to qualify for the program, for whatever reason, uh, I found I didn't have any, uh, uh, an email address for Bob, and so I asked him, uh, if he could share that with me, and Ally, right there.
That had something to do with the program they offered.
Yeah, that they wanted to take advantage of.
They wanted to take advantage of it, we couldn't, because we weren't.
All right, so more to come on that later, but we're, we're ready.
Good.
Um, solid waste trash disposal options have been working with Kevin Bernado on the overall budget for its solid waste disposal and the, uh, transportation. As you know, the CMAS contract ends in September, and the current twenty-six dollar and forty-seven ton trash disposal fee will dramatically increase, uh, to, uh, in September of twenty sixteen, to a rate of sixty dollars a ton. Regardless of the option that we choose, we have a few. Uh, in addition, our recyclables, which were costing us nothing to dispose of, just transportation costs, are now costing the town thirty dollars a ton for disposal. That has to do with the economy worldwide, in fact, that they're not selling anything to Japan and China, other places like that. In addition, uh, well, Kevin and I have two meetings with alternate, uh, alternative vendors next week to try to develop less costly options on the, on the recycling. In the meantime, um, uh, we've, we're waiting to hear from the Greater New Bedford Regional Representatives Management District. Uh, we've been negotiating with them for a while, the board chose their proposal over, uh, CMAS or, uh, Waste Zero, or Zero Wasting is the name. And the district will be voting on the board's, uh, on the voting acceptance of our, uh, proposed agreement, and taking our waste on, on a five-year basis, actually, it's a four-year.
Did we actually take a, a vote?
Yes, you did. Four-year, ten-month, with an option for five years, additional five years.
Okay, that's how we took the vote?
I, I don't know that you took it that way, but I think it was a, you took it five years, five years.
How we took it, was it for five years?
Five and five.
Or five, I believe.
Five and five?
Five, five and five, okay.
Yeah, may want to retake that, just to get out of the, get back on a fiscal year basis, that's, that's the point. Also, in that five-year interval, four years, ten months interval, something else might come along.
Sure.
That's why you decided to do it on the five-year. So, anyway, they're gonna make their decision tomorrow night?
Well, they're gonna accept it.
We hope, we hope and expect that they'll accept it, uh, and, um, and then we'll be negotiating the, uh, final language of the agreement.
Now, we, we should see some reduction in transportation costs, you were so close.
Well, we're working on that too, it's closer, yes.
Much closer.
Yeah, uh, the initial response when we broached that subject with the current, um, person providing the transportation, was that the landfill was a much hotter place to deal with because of the mud and other problems related to operation of the vehicles. So we haven't negotiated, uh, yet.
Is that where you're looking for other possibilities?
Possibilities, yeah.
Actually, well, you mentioned that before, I didn't know what you got by that.
Um, we're continuing, on another matter, we're continuing to work on police station facility improvements. Uh, Scott Barbado and I met with the chief and the local plumber to plan for the replacement of the piping and the treatment of the water, uh, in the building. That's been a problem there before, and that's one of the reasons we've had leaps in the past, so we're planning on installing a water treatment system to deal with that issue. Work on this, uh, uh, was to begin this Monday, I understand they're gonna begin on Wednesday rather than Monday. And then the next item is Hathaway Park Playground Improvements. I showed you, uh, a picture of a table.
Yes.
Uh, and, um, I also shared it with the Morris's, uh, from the committee.
Nineteen hundred ninety-five dollars?
Yeah, nineteen hundred fifty-five, something like that, um, and we can install it, yeah, the highway department can, don't talk to Chuck yet, but, uh, I'm sure he'll be glad to know that.
I'll put a post on the ground, I think it sets on a post.
One post, you can put it on a, you could put it on a post into a hole, or you could, or you could do a pad, I think we might wanna look at the pad.
Sure.
For its stability. And, um, the good news is that, um, additional good news is that, uh, uh, Dan Resendes was in today, and he has twelve hundred dollars more that hasn't gotten to us yet, that, uh, that they've raised.
How much have we got in our fund, if you have any idea?
Yes, um, we have, um, we have enough, I think, for four tables. If we wanted to go to that many.
Yeah.
At least, at least two, maybe.
Two to start?
But, yeah, we can, I think we can pay for four, and we've got another twelve hundred coming.
One of the things we need to think, as long as you mentioned Hathaway Park, is that we need to, to, to put an article in our annual town meeting, and support it for, uh, prevent of maintenance and, um, probably park improvements to the tune of about ten grand a year, I would think. Because, or five or ten, whatever we decide on, because we have to buy wood chips every year to replace them, there'll be things like that, and you wanna buy another slide, or I heard talk about. The basketball court, I guess you really can't play on it, regardless of the way it is, so.
Yeah.
Probably be a good thing, and it would encompass all the parks, you know?
Yeah, and then, um.
I had a talk with Mr. Morris today.
Yeah.
So, we'll see what happens.
Okay. The, uh, the other thing that's come up with regard to, um, the, um, what is the, uh, donation of the flagpole?
Yes.
I don't know where they're gonna locate that.
Mr. Barbado's dad, was it that donated that?
Right, yeah. And, um, this is about a fifty-foot flagpole, it used to be.
About a five thousand dollar, right?
Yeah, it used to stand, uh, at Bird Manufacturing, Foxborough, I believe, uh, and a foreign company bought the business. They bought the business for the name, and, um, all the manufacturing is still being dug overseas, so, um, those people that were instrumental in that flagpole being raised there, saw to it that it didn't stay there. It was also dedicated to the Marines, and you might, the board might wanna, uh, entertain the possibility of re-dedicating it to the Marines, so that was the original.
Be a good idea.
That's going up at the Hathaway Park?
The thought is, it would be a nice addition to the Hathaway Park.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're looking at, uh, what kind of a base we'd have to establish, it's a substantial.
It's thirty feet high, something?
Yeah, I think it's forty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet? And that's.
And so it's gonna be over fifty feet in terms of the base and the pole, that'll be very substantial, and, uh, again, you might wanna even look at lighting, uh, you know.
I agree.
Solar lighting, type thing.
Yeah, I agree.
But anyway, that's for another day.
Yeah.
Well, that stuff needs to be, uh, I mean, if we're gonna add, you know, maintenance costs and so forth, we might as well include whatever it's gonna cost to put the flagpole up, and we've gotta put a sign up also, something.
Yes, a sign, that was a commitment at the beginning of this, that every, every donor over five hundred dollars, five hundred or more, would be recognized on a, on a sign that the entrance is on, so that's, that's something we need to work on too. And finally, um, I'll be trundling off to the MMA and Maya conferences, uh, beginning on Thursday of this week, and, um, hopefully learning something and bringing it back to you.
Well, we'll be well represented at the meetings, Jack.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, absolutely.
You have an invitation, cool, you all have invitations to join Jack?
Yeah, I wanna do that.
Call for me and Paige, that's not, that's Bill, probably.
No, it's not a bill. Invitation to the, uh.
It's an invitation to buy your drinks.
Oh, no kidding?
I think so, yeah.
They're gonna be at Maya?
Yeah, and, um.
I'm sure they'll charge us for the time they should have the bar with us, right?
Right, well, no, I don't think they will. Maya is, uh, part of their regular program of, um, reducing liability, is why.
This is the itinerary.
It's managing conflict in the work, workplace, uh, and, uh, or negotiating workplace conflict, more particularly, and I will be, this is, uh, taking place on the thirteenth, that's two days from now, uh, ten-thirty to noon in Cover, and I'll be attending, uh, so we won't have any more workplace conflict if, uh, it doesn't exist.
That's good, that's good.
Thanks, that's it, that wasn't hard, was it?
No, that was good, interesting.
I think you were right in me, the longest part of the meeting is Jack's report.
Well, he's been busy, that's for sure. All right, next on our agenda is to approve the IRS, the new IRS rate for mileage, which is fifty-four cents a mile for business miles driven, down from fifty-seven point five, that was instituted in two thousand and fifteen, nineteen cents per mile driven for medical or moving purposes, down from twenty-three cents, that was instituted in two thousand and fifteen, and fourteen cents per mile driven in the service of charitable organizations. Do I have a motion to approve those as read, Mr. Sater?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion made to approve the state IRS mileage for business, medical and moving, as read, and I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and a motion passes. So next was to approve and sign the amendment, I made an NRG agreement, but we're gonna.
No, no, we, that's.
We're gonna move that to the twenty-fifth. Next is to approve the abatement from December of two thousand and fifteen, is submitted by our fire chief, and that looks to be, the fee abatement for the month of December of two thousand and fifteen, the aggregate amount was sixty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, uh, made to approve the sixty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollar and ninety-one cents abatement, I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and council passes. Next on the agenda was the annual renewal of class two and three motor licenses, which we've done. So moving on to the Board of Health, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Health, pay attention to pneumonia, which is floating around, get a bad cold, and it doesn't go away, check with your doctor. There were a couple of people that have had terrible, terrible calls, and they've ended up in the hospital because of pneumonia. I'm even fighting a cold that I've had for a number of days, but it seems to be getting better.
That pneumonia thing, I think we should probably mention that, now there's, there's a pneumonia shot you get, it's good for three types of pneumonia versus one. And the only reason I know that, I just went for a physical, and I said, you should get this, I said, I've just had one, and they said, this covers three different pneumonia viruses. So, bingo, you get it. Is that it for the Board of Health, sir?
That's it for the Board of Health.
Personnel board?
Ah, I'm up again.
You gonna do that?
I'll do that for, since, uh, this is.
Our esteemed colleague is laying out a beat somewhere, I think.
I think so. Okay, hey, Ally, this is probably, uh, doesn't really pertain on this section, but this iPad, for the last week, every time I go to read something, it just shuts off. It's about eight years old. I don't know, I, I, it just happened again here.
Want a board of mine?
No, I don't want a board of yours, I want something that I know works right.
Okay.
So anyway, I just wanna tell you that, for some reason, every time I use it, it just dies.
We all use it, we got it, Paul.
Yeah, I think so too. All right, anyway, let's go, with the first thing.
This came from the building.
Yeah, oh yeah, they were, they were laying around, anyway, uh, Board of Select, been a letter from Chief Carlton Abbott, their board members. As you may recall, after the most recent full-time police officer selection process, the board voted to establish the eligibility list for the purpose of filling existing and future vacancies. The list included Kara E. Pigeon, I request that the board take action to fill one of the existing vacancies. I respectfully request that the board appoint Kara E. Pigeon as a student officer upon her enrollment in the Basic Recruit Academy held in Plymouth. I also request that the board extend a conditional offer of regular full-time police employment to Miss Pigeon, subject to satisfactory completion of the following: the reimbursement agreement, medical examination, the physical abilities test, psychological exam, continued employment in good standings as a Freetown Reserve Police Officer, and graduation from Recruit Academy designated by the Chief of Police and conducted or certified by the Mass, uh, the Municipal Police Training Committee, MPTC. In close for signing, please find a letter, reciting such conditions in office. Excuse me.
Peter, you have to read all this, do you?
No, this is, uh, I, I would, uh, ask for a, you've already read the, uh.
Right.
The information here, I would ask for a motion to appoint, um, Reserve Police Officer Kara E. Pigeon as a E., as we call it here, a student officer.
Make a motion to approve the conditional offer of, of Pigeon is submitted by Chief Abbott.
I'll second that motion, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have an employment change of status form here, submitted by Chief Abbott. This has to do with, uh, Patrolman Shane Kelly, who was. This has to do with Patrolman Shane Kelly, who was our detective, and this is a length of service increase. He is going from a Patrolman dash three, he works a five-and-two shift at thirty-four forty-five an hour. The, the length of service increase for, for Shane goes to Patrolman four at five-and-two shift, thirty-four sixty-one.
Make a motion to approve the change of status form for Officer Shane Kelly.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we move on to the Water Department. Isabel Ferreira is a senior clerk, and this is a length of service increase for Isabel. Now Isabel works in the Water Department, also known as the Sewer Department, Water and Sewer Department, and she also works some hours in the, in the Town Administrator's Office. So there's three change of status forms because three different budgets pay for her hours. So for the Water Department, the rates of pay are the same. She's going from fifteen sixty-seven an hour to fifteen ninety-five. So I would entertain a motion that the, the three change of status forms, we do concurrently.
I, I make a motion to approve the change of status forms concurrently for Isabel Ferreira, our senior clerk.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we got another one here. Jessica Thomas. Jessica Thomas is the Assistant Treasurer. As you know, Jessica, a while back, was, was appointed a temporary treasurer when the town was in need of a treasurer. She really did an excellent job for us, and she's now the Assistant Treasurer, and this is a length of service increase also. Her rate of pay as the Assistant Treasurer, Step One, is seventeen ten, she's going to Step Two at eighteen eighty-three an hour. I would entertain a motion to approve this increase.
I would like to say this, these people that we're approving the change of status reform are all excellent employees, just super people to work with. So I would like to offer a motion to sign the change of status form for Ms. Jessica Thomas.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, over to the Highway Department, William J. Simmons, Jr., another length of service increase. He's the mechanic for the town, better known as Billy Simmons. His rate of pay is twenty-four eighty-seven an hour, length of service increased to twenty-six dollars and eleven cents an hour.
I offer a motion to sign the change of status form for William slash Billy Simmons.
Okay, before I, I, I'm going to second that motion, but I missed one thing here that I should, in the open meeting, say, that this includes a five percent incentive. He has told us that he is going to retire January sixth, two thousand and seventeen. That incentive is part of their collective bargaining agreement. I'd make, a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one more, one more. This is for the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Submitted by Chief Gary Sylvia. This is for Jordan DeMello, a probationary call firefighter slash paramedic. He was just hired as a probationary employee. He, his rate of pay is sixteen twenty-four an hour. This is a request to, to employ him in the town of Freetown.
Make a motion to sign the change of status form for Jordan DeMello, so he can be employed as a call firefighter in Freetown.
I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, I want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about our Police Association, Freetown Police Association. And I don't know how many people have seen this on the Police Association website, but three of our officers, excellent officers, are offering a gun safety course for anybody that, in the community that wants to take a gun safety course. Some people want to get their license to carry, and this course qualifies for the, their certificate qualifies them to apply to whatever town they live in for a license to carry. They're actually having a, a course here on February thirteenth, here at the Senior Center, and the Board authorized the, the use of the hall here, and it's, unfortunately, it's, it's already filled up. But keep an eye on their website, because I know that they're going to be, they're going to be having additional courses in the future for anybody that's interested. I can tell you that these officers, Elton Ashley Sergeant, Eddie Dwyer, another sergeant, and Mark Cornerscherr, he's all certified instructors, and they, they do a great job. And I can attest to that, because I used to work with these guys, and they really do a good job. So I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Good job, sir.
I'm all done.
You're done.
All right.
Moving on to new business, I think we got is the dates for the upcoming Board of Selectments meeting. We've got January twenty-fifth, scheduled February the eighth and February the twenty-second. Everybody good with those dates? I guess we are. Nothing else on the new business, moving on to old business, and this is all. We've been saying this water agreement thing for three years. I bet it's like been going on three years, and this has been in the old business for three years.
Jack, did you get a hold of them? Are you turning?
Yes, I've, I've emailed them, and I understand that the mayor, mayor-elect was sworn in.
Yep.
And has, and has a chief of staff. And now is, now that he's official, Mr. Silverstein is going to contact him.
Very good.
Good.
Okay, maybe we can get that rolling.
That'd be good.
That would be good. It'd be nice to finish it, started to finish it in one term.
Yeah. Yeah, before there's a new mayor, right?
Before there's a new mayor, right, and a new Selectment, yeah.
Sound good.
That's it, old business is done, nothing else. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. If you don't make it, I will.
Do we have to?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion made, and I second that motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.